Okay, I'm gonna call this Perry's Report of Education Work Session to order. Wednesday, May first, 2024. Mr. Drew, roll call please.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Here.
Ms. Laramo.
Here is right.
Ms. Menke.
Here.
Dr. Ruffer.
Here.
Mr. Bennet.
I am here. State for the Portability. Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't think we need the safety briefing. So that's take a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
Um.
Dr. Ruffer?
Second.
Ms. Menke? Oh, just there. And, uh, roll call please.
Dr. Ruffer?
Yes.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Ms. Menke?
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
The agenda, oh, yes, the agenda is approved. So next, we have this morning a treasury, treasures report. Mr. Drew.
Do we need to read the clap?
Oh, I've done, and we stand. So, you know, here. So, it's that time of year. It's like Christmas for treasures.
Oh, really?
Not really, but, uh.
Is that what this?
The Nike report is.
It is really not. It's shopping for Christmas is what it is.
That's true.
Right. July comes Christmas, but it's the shopping now because, okay. So, this is our annual, semi-annual, five-year forecast at the time. So I'm gonna go through it today, line by line. If there's any tweaks, I'll review the work session, uh, work session with the finance committee, and then when you approve it, I'll kind of have a summary. So unless there's any significant changes, so this is kind of your detailed walkthrough now. Obviously, if there's something comes up that you want more detail, you know, come to board meeting, sort of do that. You gotta feel some levity in this. This is not really my process, but, um, it is one way to approach this, I think. There are obviously some aspects of this that are, you know, trying to read, read the General Assembly's mind. I think the magic eight ball might be just as good.
Here you go.
Um, just a reminder, um, there is a good reason why you have to sit through this, Dr. Ruffer.
Favorite timer.
I know. You know, the primary purpose, obviously, for five-year forecasts is to engage in some long-term planning and financial discussions, right? We're looking out five years. Um, most of the statute delivered deals a year at a time, but this is a chance for us to look out longer. It's also based on the four twelve certificate. So really, any contracts that we have, we have to attest, we have the money to do that. And I'll show that what shows up in the forecast. And this is important for the capital negotiations right now. That four twelve certificate is a part of that. And of course, the last one, I've got to change that to do, I guess. OD and state auditor. With, uh, kind of by address history, Mount Healthie, just a fiscal emergency. Um, I've talked to some ocean state on that, um, the, the, this, Harvard Education failed them out to go through, but it's, it's a mess. Mess down there. And their, and their, their forecast was not, there was, there was a miss somewhere in that. It was not caught until they were ten million dollars in the hole.
Power of the decimal point, right?
Well, that was, I was, well, at some point in time, I'll share more of the story on that. Again, again, a reminder, this is a forecast at this point in time with these particular assumptions. Um, today, we'll be working on closing April. I'll have April's month numbers that reconcile to get this year's sharper. And, and I want to focus on the assumptions. So you guys hear my thought process of the numbers and, and then we go from there. And then also recognize that we're on Miami state. This is the end of the first year. Next year, we know what's coming. After that, we don't, we obviously don't know for sure. And seriously, it could significantly change because, uh, we, we have some friends and not so friendly folks in General Assembly who are in leadership positions. And of course, there's lots of, lots of, uh, links out there. You have this, this presentation now is in four docs, I want to say. So, as, as you know, like those who've been through it before, she was in Laura Welcome. Um, I could start with the bottom line. Now, this all assumes that we pass, um, replace our current levy in November with a no new tax levy. So it's essentially no new money than, um, but it does assume that we pass, um, a levy there. So this is, oh, my forecast from November. And let's focus, I'm gonna, there's lots and lots of numbers. So I just want to focus kind of on the bottom line numbers. So these last three rows are, are, um, year, yearly, um, surplus or deficit, then you would have the replacement levy, and then the cash balance, assuming we, we generate that, that levy. So, and so we'll, we'll repair these two boxes. So our end of this year cash balance in November, a forecast of a little over twenty and a half million. We're probably, we'll end up better than that by about a half a million, I'd look at forecast. Okay? And, and we see that when we talk in the, you know, month-to-month stuff. Our revenue is up on particularly on earnings, on interest, and, and our expenses right now are, are down. So that combination generates, and it's a long way away, but that TV, we need a bigger TV in here. Um, of course, the next big year is next year, right? Because we're going into next fiscal year. November forecast says coming in twenty-one and a half million. We'll end up like eight hundred thousand dollars, um, better than that. Obviously, it's a carryover from this year as, um, as well as, um, um, just some tweaks, tweaks here and there. But looks like London, next year will be better than expected also. The other important number is where we are to end the forecast. In November, it forecast four and a half million dollars. Now, I'll, I'll remind you, that's nice in a, in a year of positive, we have to end the year with positive cash balance. But if we, if that's where we ended up, we're borrowing in January and February to make people. Okay? And, and this, and, and you'll see this, um, two million dollars less. Um, in the May forecast, I didn't have trailers, there's as much trailer, trailers as that guy's up built in, in the November forecast as it is now. So there's some changes there that we'll see. Okay, so, bye. So, um, again, I'm focused on the first two years, this year and next year, because obviously we know, we have a better idea of what's going on. Um, so, again, prior to replacing the levy, the next two years, our, our cash balance is good. We're twenty-one billion to fifteen point seven, but then we're in deficit spending in, um, twenty twenty-six. All right? And then by, um, that's, that's before any levy replacement. Replace the levy, you've already seen those numbers. If we don't replace the levy, obviously, we're, we're, we're talking about, you know, significant cuts in order to balance the budget. And I've actually, I've got another spreadsheet, won't show it here. I may with finance committee, I'll show the impact of just delaying a year. If you replace the levy, you still may have to cut six million dollars just to, to, to get where to keep even. Because you'll lose a whole year, right? You lose thirteen and a half million dollars in, in that year. And so that's, so bottom line is replace the levy, no new taxes. We're good through twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-eight gets carried without other reductions or new money. Oh, so it's kind of hard to see on the left-hand side, the yellow, there are two lines that are important. From the line ten ten, which is our fund balance for certification of appropriation. When we do appropriation for general fund, that's the revenue line they look at. But for, um, things like contracts, their four twelve salary schedules, they allow us to assume the renewal of the levy, no new money. So when we look at four twelve certificates, I say, huh, it looks like you have money because you'll pass, you'll renew the levy. So, so the state has two different, if you will, targets that we have to use going, going with the finances, if that makes sense. So we could kind of gloss over that sometimes, but, um, so we're, we're allowed to assume replacement of levy.
Okay. Can I ask a question now or should we wait?
Oh, go ahead.
So we're in negotiations now. And I'm looking at these two different numbers, um, between the one cash balance before levy replacement and the two million afterwards. Um, how do we, how do we talk in negotiations when we cannot, in this climate, guarantee that even a replacement levy is going to pass? I'm thinking, I mean, this is a silly example, and we'll do an honor for, for Ray here. Like the boys volleyball team. How can we, how can we approach them and say, yes, let's make you a varsity sport? When we're looking at a number that could potentially end up being forty-four million in the hole? If, if a levy doesn't pass. I mean, I know that's a very tiny example, but on a grander scale, when you guys are behind closed doors in negotiations, I'm like, how do you even, how can you even talk about this?
Well, so that's exactly, Tom, Tom Broke, speaker of this negotiation, we shared his exact information. And said, this is one reason why we don't want to go beyond two years. It's because we can, in that, in twenty twenty-six, reasonably have a plan that we gave to cover that deficit, right? It's gonna be painful, but to go beyond that, you're exactly right. How do we, we can't. So we have these, now, teachers could argue by law, you know, you look at line twelve, you can assume passage. But aren't from a negotiation standpoint, that's not where we are. Tom Broke can speak up. That's, we're, we're, we're not assuming passage with teachers. Now, they are. But, but anyway, but we had, I get it. I gave them, I gave them a November presentation in negotiations and, um, you know, again, I don't know what matters to them. They want what they want.
Well, I get that, but then reality has to see.
So anyway, that's what, but that's a good question. So let me walk through the revenue lines. I'm gonna go fairly quickly, slowly, you know, stop and ask questions. I think soon the question's good, and I think that's what we need to do. So, start with our biggest, um, point of revenue, and this is, um, local property tax. Um, here's the, here's a lot of numbers here. Here's the assumption. Our class value one, class value, valuation increase this year was twenty-three point seven one. I have it increasing point one percent in a not updated year in twenty, in twenty twenty-six, because our net's update is twelve percent. Just a parenthesis there. So the bottom line is, you're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're at the twenty mil floor, so we'll see just a tiny bit of growth. And then in, in twenty twenty-six, we'll get our update year for twenty twenty-seven, we'll see a little bit of, of an increase in valuation soon as they have the floor.
Tom, you used that class one and class two in a, in a recent discussion. What, what's a class one or a class?
Residential ag is class one, commercial industrial is class two.
Oh.
So let's put it in perspective. We're nine hundred million in class one, we're two hundred million in class two. Class two does not move the needle, except when class two devalues, it pushes up to how much taxes class one pays. So when we will order revision compliant by commercial, they reduce their valuation, we still get the same amount of money. It's just mom and dad homeowner are paying for it, not, not the business.
And that was the thing that the state changed, that we can't object the same way that we used to, right?
And they're, and yes, and they're still, they're still putting things in there to solve a, a bill that they want to, there's a loophole for LLC transfers. It's a nightmare to try to hide the valuation increases. And, um, anyway, but the point is, for us, it's very clearly, everything shifts the burden to residential, and we're already heavily residential.
And, and I know Randy has expressed this in other settings, but, um, the twenty mil floor is something that the legislature can change. So the crystal ball that Randy has to look through, you know, we're, you know, the twenty mil floor now, but that doesn't mean in the future that can change to be a detriment to the district either or a district.
So in fact, I'm comparing testimony for next week, um, that, that shows that, look, you can't make a decision on property tax without impacting state, um, the fair funding formula, they're integrated. So you've got to be very, it's, there's tentacles are all intertwined, so you've got to, you've got to be really careful about it. The other thing to point out in, in class two is I have flat growth there. What we have, businesses are very good about depreciation, devaluing, devaluing the properties, the same Congress new construction. So right now, I have it as a break even. It would not surprise me if our valuations for commercial actually go down as residential goes up. Okay? So that's, that's, so I think those are pretty conservative assumptions on residential. Um, you see the big drop in revenue next year and twenty twenty-six, and that's due to that levy. It's below the line. We don't put it on top at this point. The second big piece here is tangible personal property tax. That's public utilities. Um, we, you'll see that we saw a little drop this year, and there, it's devaluation, they're depreciating. It's, it's tangible personal property, there's substations, the power lines, pipelines are depreciating, depreciating over time. And so we'll get less money from, from this. And this, and this is full rate. So whereas the other, um, taxes are subject to tax reduction, up isn't. So this is an important one because there's no reduction factor. So they're, they're reducing as they can. So it's not a big percentage, but still, we're losing some revenue because of that. And we, by the way, we, you hear pipeline money, we have a little bit, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our two point eight million. So the pipeline just crosses our district just a little bit. Uh, income tax, you'll see last year, this year a drop, um, and that is all due to non-withholding. Our withholding is up. And so, um, what I have, what we've done is our trend for the last five years is five point four percent corporate withholding. Um, we were, we were growing over two percent on non-withholding until this year. And so I've kind of just tempered the non-withholding at one percent tomorrow. Let's say, what's it, tomorrow, we worked on reconciling income tax to see what's going on there. And they, after the bias in income tax, we look at, the non-withholding is business ag, that's stuff that you don't get with a full night paycheck. The thing about the withholding is those who work, who live in the school district, which we all do, um, that school tax, it's, it was coming out of your paycheck. It shows up in withholding. If you're filing that, you know, during tax season now, because it wasn't the whole, that's the non-withholding part. And that could be delayed. It could just be because of, you know, the lame payments and stuff like that. But it's been down the last two pages, um, this year. And that's important, right? That, um, you know, think about, that is about, right now, eight, eight mils worth of, uh, property tax. That income tax, it, it was ten millions, nine, eight and a half, nine mil, eight and a half mil. So it's, it's an important chunk. Okay, here's where the crystal ball comes in. State aid. Assuming, there are probably two big factors in state aid are enrollment and capacity, and it's our wealth growth. And if we keep growing, we will see, um, that our capacity goes up, growth goes up. We'll keep, we'll keep off, we're pretty close with, we'll see a little more state funding. If enrollment is off a little bit, capacity goes higher, then that could shift. You can notice this year and next year, you see a drop. And the reason is because our capacity just went up because of evaluations. But the base cost, the inputs did not change. So keep inputs the same, so the cost of a teacher, the cost of a, um, uh, counselor hasn't changed year to year. So our capacity has gone up, but the cost of educating students, the space standpoint, has not been, been real fast, right? So we actually lose money just because of that calculation. So we're assuming going forward that the, the next Miami will completely implement the fair school funding formula. And we, we have allies that are there. Now, whether or not they will win, how about that? And then, and that in two thousand twenty-six, they'll update the base cost again. This year was a twelve percent increase in base cost, that's the table, they've gone a couple of years without doing it. So five percent increase in base cost. You can see what that does to the funding. You'll make this one, you know, this one and a half million, one point four million dollars just by those two assumptions. So this one, obviously, this is an area, don't know. Next year at this time, I'm sure Tom and I will be perfect as loud as we can and to whoever will listen to us. And that's getting smaller and smaller, you know, as I said. Any questions on this thing?
But in this slide, you do have certain, the next two.
Yeah, yeah, next year's fine.
This is particularly down here.
No, obviously, if we have more growth than one, than one percent, than that, um, number. That number would have dropped more if we wouldn't add all day kindergarten. So evaluation of twenty-three percent, that's a pretty big jump. But we're adding two hundred more students because we're adding all day kindergarten. Life. Um, unrestricted, restricted state aid, that's, it's just, it's gonna move with growth, no substantial changes. Unless, unless there's substantial changes in enrollment, which, while in fact, it may, it's dropping some. We're not gonna be having, um, a six-period industrial tech at junior high, which, and those kind of things impact that much. Student wellness is in there, and that's a pretty well stagnant based on enrollment and, and our, we not, we're just managing. State share local property tax, that's a rollback, or, or, um, this follows real estate collection, so there's not anything major talked about there. We have no control over that. The last one is all rev, all other revenue, the, you'll see a significant drop, mainly due to tuition-free all-day kindergarten and just a reduction in earnings is our cash balance loss. This may be, I look at it, I may be a little bit too conservative for, for next year, but, um, I'm, I'm a little bearish on interest rates and stuff. That's the revenue side. Any questions or comments out there?
One, one slide that you did, and maybe I should have hyped up them, but you, you talked about the effect of the demographics of our population, that, that our district is so heavy residential and so, so under on commercial. I thought you need to do a mini presentation of this to the city and township to let them understand some of the damage that they're causing to our region.
But, and to some extent, we, we need to do that. It would, Constance would do a job of communicating with, with those. We've got some more things planned to do that. The, the horse is already out of the barn. You take all the development land we have left near commercial, it doesn't swing it. We're not gonna be Rossford. I was looking at cash balances, Rossford has a hundred and thirty percent, and we got thirty percent of our property.
Wow.
Right? And that, but that, that horse is out of the barn. Now, yes, we want, we need a lot more commercial industrial. I think the answer is yes. Thing is, we're not gonna get fifty fifty. We made it to seventy thirty, if that was what the thing was, but I think, you know, um, I was just talking to someone and building permits, they just, for, I can't remember how many, how many homes, it was over by the high school, it was like a hundred and seventy more homes. Right? So it's, and, you know, anyway, and we're talking about developers not being supported, so it's, it's a, it's an interesting conversation. You are exactly right. So any question? We're good on that. We'll go to the one that we probably, in some ways, have a little bit more control, and that's on the expense side. Um, so, our expenses. Our number one expense, obviously, you know, is personnel. You know, if we look at our seventy, you know, this year, seventy-four and a half million, forty-four million of it is in salaries. So, you know, eighty-three percent or so of our budget goes for personnel costs. So we want to take a minute here and talk about personnel for next year. Um, because I think it's important for everyone to be informed on, you know, what's driving it. You see personnel costs going up, you know, three point four million. And that's, you know, obviously, staffs and stuff like that and salary schedules, but it's, there's also new personnel, so I want to talk a little bit about that. And we've talked about this process before, but I just want to kind of reiterate with common community. So, so new personnel expenditures. We spend a lot of time, you know, Tom, Don, Brooke and I, going through these requests and trying to, you know, be thoughtful in what we have. Um, and there's three general criteria. Tom and Brooke, you can speak up here. Number one is we look at this new positions as compliance. We have to have them because of our advice codes or other statutes. It's enrollment driven. We've got more students, you know, we need to have more classroom, you know, add an all-day kindergarten, right? It's enrollment driven. And then to maintain priority program. I once, I, I call it new programs, not really new. In some cases, it's stuff that we're doing. And you'll see we're shifting from grant-funded to the general fund because that's your dollars and stuff going the way. All right, so I'm gonna go, go through all the positions. Um, I got the lists in the presentation. In bold are, are brand-new, as in, we don't, we've never had them. And then you'll see non-old is, we've had them, but they were funded somewhere else. So we had, so had a two and a half kindergarten teachers, give us the full day, a math teacher at the high school, enrollment-driven. Um, PE teacher, uh, junior high, sorry, a math, PE teacher at halftime. We already have time, had a halftime PE there, we added them in full-time. And this is part, it's due enrollment, it's due to not having that six-period industrial tech. We had to have the students, had some other electors, so it's enrollment driven. T-SO, was it teaching English?
Second language.
Yeah. Driven by the number of students we have. So that's, again, driven by enrollment. First one here, that's not, we're paying for this position out of, um, we call it something else, but out of, um, grant, like five oh four coordinator. Um, all our buildings, having that person in place for consistency on five oh fours, it's, it's, makes everyone's life a defeat, just a needed position. Um, I would call that, I don't know where, it's kind of compliance, it's kind of enrollment type of thing, as well as maintaining what we've got. Wilson reading teachers, um, these are, look, we're, we're talking about reading intervention at this point, right? We're, we're all of a lit wisdom for science and reading, but these particular positions are there to bring kids up. Um, and again, it's, it's somewhat compliance, it's enrollment, it's all those things.
Yeah. I'd say it's, it's a couple of those things, just with the requirements for dyslexia and everything else, so.
There, there, we've had some Wilson reading in, in place, and we're, we're happy to beat that staff up. Elementary deans, um, we have four elementary deans. Um, they're half, three of them are half-paid out of ESSR funds. We're bringing them all into, um, into, um, general fund, because ESSR obviously is going away. Again, you know, you think about the amount of, um, the OTEZ load on the building principals, the number of students, just unreasonable. Have six hundred students in the building, one administrator. And, um, so that's kind of driving that.
Well, and just real quick, just to clarify to you, the deans cannot evaluate the teachers, but they're needed because, you know, you have six hundred students, for example, at Woodland. Someone's got to be handling the students while the principal's evaluating forty people, so.
The alternative is they have system, the alternative is they have system principal, right?
Yeah.
So, um, math coach and reading coach, they're, um, you guys heard from them at the last board meeting, they did some special assignment. They've been, up to this point, those two positions are grant-funded, um, with all the curriculum, the support of faculty to continue those positions.
Would the reading coach be somebody who's highly trained, that was new, signs and reading thing?
It's already, these are already the people that are the TOSSAs. So, yeah, Nikki Maschinsky, it's just pulling that out of the ESSR to the general fund. Yeah.
Yeah, sort of. Uh, career as a community coordinator, um, with our business advisory council, we've done one for slash year, Christine's been greatest. These are those career athletes outside of four-year education and that kind of thing. The community seems to have indicated, and not just the community, but we need to spend more time here. So that was grant-funded in the first year. We brought that back into the general fund. Couple of elementary monitors, again, for enrollment reasons. The high school, we have, we hired a guidance secretary at the high school, paid out grant funds last year. And again, that is, is somewhat, is driven by enrollment and load on the guidance, guidance officer. And then, um, elementary STEM teacher, we ended up not needing as, as many kindergarten staff, and plus salaries came in better. We, we, um, Toth and Frank were sharing a STEM teacher, decided to add a STEM teacher, each building had their own. And so it's, you know, it's equity as well as an enrollment type thing. Um, hopefully I captured that correctly, look.
Yeah.
But it's, so, and the, and the bottom line is, when we add all those positions, we had, I had a million dollars or so, a little buck. The monitors are part of a bucket of money, but a million, and, and the careers and community coordinators are a bucket. But I had a million dollars set aside for certified, that, that list comes in under a million dollars in salary. And so we worked against that number. And that's an important number to remember, that million dollars, because you see changes in that number going forward because of some of the economic pressures.
And just to go back to the STEM position, some of you may remember a couple of years ago. As Woodland and Fort Meigs got up to five and six sections of each grade level, sharing for specials teachers was not working well. Because you can kind of split, you know, five classes between four specials teachers, but it gets pretty challenging to split six classes between four specials teachers, so. The the STEM teachers full time were added at the two larger buildings, well, next year Frank will also have multiple sections of five. And um total is up to one, so sharing the teacher between the two was was becoming pretty problematic. So enrollment driven, but also to maintain programming to for consistency, so students are able to get the same level of STEM services, no matter which elementary building they attend.
And I think it's important for you guys to see the staffing list, personnel is talked about it, but when the community says, oh, you're adding all these positions. You can see and see the reason why, and you know, at least in my mind, they make sense, obviously, you know, the funds get tight.
I I have a question, for the elementary dean, do you feel that's the best bang for your buck versus an assistant principal? Because I understand that the whole evaluation system is very time consuming.
I think we're probably coming to a place in the next few years where we'll be coming back to the board and saying we need to upgrade those to assistant principals for for those reasons. I think that at one time, having a dean was something that you saw districts starting to do. And I think now what we're seeing is people with the limitations that they have, I mean, it's not just the evaluations, but it's also, you know, approving IEDPs and other administrative functions. And you're seeing districts now beginning to to tilt more towards administrative, you know, assistant principal. The cost really isn't that significant, because most of the deans that we have are teachers on, you know, in the middle of the salary schedule with master's degree. You know, and converting that to administrative isn't isn't significant challenge. We just lost a really, we recognized her at a board meeting last year, when she left being the union president here, Margaret Bernard. Just because during COVID and all those things, we wanted, she did a really nice job of of kind of navigating that, so. But she just is resigning to accept the assistant principal position at an elementary school, so and it's a much smaller district.
So, an assistant principal, that they need their principal license to do that, so are deans being told that this is the writing on the wall, can you start working on those now?
We haven't, um, I mean, I I think we're a few years away to to begin to plan, because we have to make sure that those dollars. What, you know, what is the, you know, cost difference between these positions? Work that into the five year forecast, and then I think once we have that conversation with the board, then we'll begin to let folks know. Most of the deans um have or are in the process of getting their administrative licenses now. So, I think this is a great landing spot for administrative, aspiring administrators, they get that experience. And I think that, so I think we have one. One has. Yeah, one one has, well, I'm talking elementary deans, so certainly we have a dean at the high school who's, you know, probably.
An HPI.
An HPI, so at the high school, when that position comes up, she retires, probably talk about. Replacing that with an assistant principal position, which would probably be less costly. So, I think there are things to communicate, but we've been reluctant to do that with the list that's here. This is probably Randy maybe one third of the requests.
That's what I was gonna say too, I think it's important to note that there's a lot that we say no, we can't do.
And these are, these are a new lot of general funds, so a teacher who retired, resigned, replaced, and it's not in that list. And typically, most of the time, we'll replace some teachers more on the salary schedule and do a reading, not all the time, but most of the time we are.
I think the other thing to notice too is is, you know, while we're acknowledging growth in a lot of these areas that are really prompting these additions. And Randy did a really nice job of kind of going over those, you're not seeing administrative position added, so we're very cautious and only when necessary. So that's part of that, you know, we're starting to feel that pressure at the elementary's as they continue to grow.
You're very good encouraging a deep bench, um I'm just wondering if that was the writing on the wall?
Yeah, we don't wanna over promise that, because, you know, we may, you know, come to a point where. You know, we're, yeah, so so but but I think we're recognizing and acknowledging that. Thankful buck is a great one, it's a great way to phrase that question, because I think you're starting to see that. For a while, it was really, we started off with a half a dean per head. And so, more kids, more responsibilities.
Yeah, I mean, I I hear quite a bit of even deans, you know, because they're being busier, and busier with issues and challenges, it's a good thing.
Well, it's not only about that, too, that's a great, that's a great point, um they're getting busier and busier, and it's not just taking things off of the principal desk. You know, they're also taking things off the council's desk, because at when Brooke was an elementary principal, before we had deans. That guidance counselor was keeping up a lot of those administrative, using air quotes, kind of functions. And not sitting down with the kids and connecting with students and running groups. The deans have now kind of pulled some of those things off of their plate, which benefits students, benefits, you know, classrooms.
No, no, it's great, but but I think it's important for the board, you being part of the the thing, thought process, and obviously, when we get in a bunch of times, you can also see. You know, places we're able to go to, we'll look at, right, assistant people, so let me talk about personnel on a bigger big bigger picture. So still got a big two percent built in, and that's what we're still holding in negotiations features. Here's the big change I want you to be aware of, so I had money built in in future years to deal with growth and staff. I had like nine hundred to a million dollars each year, new certified, and two hundred thousand for classified staff. They've been cut down, I still have it in future years, but I've cut it down to more than half. So, there's a recognition here that we just cannot, with our with our revenue stream and costs that we got and trailers and that kind of thing. Just wanna think, we're acknowledging the fact that we just can't continue the trajectory without something else changing, right? So we're already looking at, guess what, we're not gonna have money, much money to spend next year in positions, and in fact, obviously, if you get tighter, you end up having to talk about, you know, complete freezes. And then, you know, you go from, then you work out from there, so. So just know that that line has changed because of that, as Tom pointed out, no administrative staff now, you know, the deans versus assistant principals, that's a conversation. I know we'll have to have it in a couple of years, now financially, I don't know, it's it doesn't really move the needle because of where the deans are, but it's it's there is a, there's eye ball. You know, candy there, we have newspapers, or blood and water sometimes, they don't really look at it.
Randy, can you say that again, you said that, you know, now you're projecting four hundred fifty thousand a year for new certified, what what was in the previous?
A million dollars.
We got to cut that down as well, purchasing of.
Yeah, for trailers, and, you know, you look for all the out years, it was, in my mind, it was irresponsible to put a, you know, spend a million dollars. When you look at, even with replacing the levy, you know, in twenty twenty-eight, we are we're hurting, right? And so, I think we have to, it's a statement to, you know, to the community and stuff, that we are, we're cognizant of the challenges, but also realizing children have students coming in. That's why we kept money in there, so we make it a zero, because if we go down one percent, we're gonna have to add staff, or it's, you know, special education. We're gonna have more um classroom teachers, right, and all those, all of the above.
And the base increase, two percent, so anything more than that will require more cuts and.
Yes, exactly, exactly, and that's why, you know, yeah, exactly. Benefits, so again, that's driven by wages and salary, you know, the only thing, only really important assumption there is. Our increase this year was four and a half percent on health and ten percent on dental. I've got ten percent, net, we've averaged about three percent the last five years on health insurance increases. Our plan is well managed, but that is well below national averages, so.
I I can attest to that, because I sit there and I'm like, that's impressive, because my time on board beforehand, and that was one of the years of like mid teens to even low twenties, so.
There are quite a few um consortions that are, you know, ten to twenty percent increases. So, I've got ten percent built into the budget over the next couple of years, just again, as a conservative, we've not been there, but recognize that. We could have one million dollar claim, and that could that could drive us in that direction. Right now, for example, our stop loss looks like we're gonna deal for only going up two percent. That stop loss is about a million dollars, the stop loss insurance, so that's that's a good deal. Purchase services, again, nothing specific here, talk about special education, and is the biggest driver of that, five or six million dollars of that is special education. Our apparel is and other services are in that, um I've got on the rest of the services, three, four percent increase, except for utilities, a little bit less. We are seeing savings from our LED lighting upgrades. Yeah, so, but still, now this is, special education is a big, or I I know I beat that one to death, it's not, it's not a judgment, it's just a, it's the fact we're providing services to these kids, to these kiddos, and. That's where that that shows up in terms of uh the pairs, which we have almost ninety pairs.
To clarify that, when you say that, um we just had a discussion, Andrew, you were some of the, I think she got from you, versus, you know, what what it costs to educate a student with specialties versus what the state. Supplies the funding for, which is miniscule compared to what the requirements and needs are of funding.
They had a fair amount of, hey, you're not, you know, I want that all the extra money, you do it to people, it doesn't work that way. Yeah, there's, you know, it costs, you know, forty thousand dollars to educate your students, we're not getting forty thousand students. In theory, we're getting it, but then we get our, we get twenty percent of it, because of our capacity.
Right.
Supplies and materials, I, you know, this has been well maintained this year, obviously, supplies for students, there's disinflationary changes, there are some bump ups in here, furniture purchases. And I'll talk about, we get to capital a little bit, we bought furnitures out of um PI fund, but there is just not money in the PI fund to do, so. We are buying, for example, this year, um two hundred thousand dollars in furniture for next year, for enrollment, we have enrollment change.
And just to clarify too with that, James personally walks through, um, you know, Jason, they walk through with all of the principals and actually look at the spaces and look at what's there and. Try to figure out if they can shuffle things around, so it's, there's a lot of thought that's going into what what they're getting.
So, capital one, this is, you know, obviously, one of our smaller line items, which shows the biggest change, next year, we're pretty well holding the line, but in twenty twenty-six, we will, we'll. We'll have to buy trailers, put some where, probably at Toth, um at this point, you know, high school is tight, but we'll need trailers. Other than that, capital's a small increase, when I say trailers, I mean, we we phrase that, it's like, it could be classroom, it could be conversion from non-student space into student space. We have a room that's not currently used for students, we take money out of there and convert that into that, like the basement at Toth. Okay, so what, so it could be trailers or space conversion. At this point, we don't have any bus purchases projected out of new, just out of the general fund, we do have a a lease that's up to two years. Complete lease that we may start leasing some more buses, at least, well, twelve buses a couple, number of years ago, and that's finally paid off. And in my mind right now, because of enrollment, this is our, one of our highest risk areas. The PI fund is stretched, he is repairing buildings, he's doing everything he can to do high priority items, him and I, James are talking. Maybe we need to pay for the side of general fund, because we can't ignore buildings, you know, you have bricks that you don't highly need to be pointing, although they fall out, but water and.
That will turn to the board.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I was stunned at how much, yeah, I was stunned at how much that roof was going to cost.
Well, and that's another, the cost of that is another discussion item, but I'll let James talk about that when he reviews the summer projects. These two items together are just essentially, they're kind of other financing, um the, we have a house built two sixty-four project that. Before my time, um that matures at the end of the forecast, so that three hundred and forty thousand goes away at the end of the forecast. And then our current energy project is a the second line of interest in fiscal charge, um I mean, principal other. That, we originally projected about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of general fund, but we're only gonna have to do about half of that out of general fund. So we split that between general fund, the Commodore fund, so the HVACC upgrades this building and paid for a Commodore fund, which comes from, allows commons TIF. And then PI pays about thirty thirty percent of it, so we're splitting the cost of that project between the three parts. And I skipped other objects, other objects is, um, I don't know how I skipped it, other objects is just the fees we pay the auditor and department taxation to collect, to collect our taxes. The last item on here is our our service fund transfer, obviously, that's up to the board discretion in any given year. So, in an out years, we'd say, look, we're too tight, we can't make that trade, but that that's service discretion, if I left it in there, because I don't think retirements are gonna stop. In fact, you know, we're we're quiet this year, relatively quiet. But, you know, we start looking at seven to fifteen teachers over the next couple of years, that will impact that, because you gotta figure out that, if a teacher's been. You're a long time, you're probably forty, fifty thousand dollars in seven, train around.
Instead, just change the city shares, they dropped it down to about thirty-four years to retire, they're looking at thirty-three. They're converted back to thirty-four, you have somebody at thirty-four by thirty-three.
So, again, to wrap up, just a reminder, um without, we play replacement, obviously, this is not untenable, you know, we would. We we would not, obviously, we can't operate there, you know, we would make, we're already, by the way, we've already talked about this, we're already looking at with the um. Scenario that we aren't able to replace the level, okay, so, and the the board will have to, I don't know if Tom or Tim knew his time, would use that with the board, but. The board will have to say if if the levy doesn't replace what our next steps are gonna be. And we need that support from the board in order to, in order to communicate that, right? With the levy, replace it with no, do taxes, we ended up, you know, we could say that we're good, the state's not gonna, they'll raise a red flag in that fifth year, they're not looking that far out. And obviously, a lot can happen from now on in, but obviously, I'd be concerned about the trajectory, because we'd be, again. We'd be, we'd never do something before then, that, so in twenty twenty-seven, you're talking about new money or other reductions. So, kind of quick observation, you know, we're we're in good shape, the 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 um, the um, what's the, the ax of dominoes or whatever that term is. Is kind of looming near November, but, you know, you can get rid of that, and I'm pretty comfortable. Like, again, the key drivers, who knows, enrollment, and then legislation, the general assembly not messing up what we have. And of course, levy replacement, another belt tightening has gotta be, so, you know, in my conversation with you is, the levy is the next thing to discuss. And I I plan to talk about that finance committee, I think we are, with the board, because we'll have to start talking about legislation in June. That's it, that's that's your five year forecast, as as simplified as I can make it.
Much appreciated, no, I was saying, I'm following, I like how you have the notes at the bottom, so people can go back and get that, um explaining some of that's, you know.
I.
Some of the words that you use and the terms that you use, I think it was good.
I think we need to be very, we need to be transparent about it, you know.
Well, you're using, I'm using language that the community can understand, not an educated, even though, you know, it's so confusing. But you lay it out there in language and with the links and that, that you can find information on. Explain the difference um from an improvement versus general fund, I think that's super helpful for people.
I also wanna emphasize earlier that in the split time, at that board meeting, you had the board approve the five year forecast, hopefully, it's our forecast, not mine. Okay, and that's, and that's one thing, early in my board member career, I didn't quite grasp right away. Laura's been through a few times, I would choose this.
Sample audience, a lot.
Any other questions, comments?
I think your, your assumptions, nothing jumped out at me as being unreasonable, you've got, you've surely got a history of trend, I know it was your fourth time, or fifth, third time you have four pairs of Christmas? Something like that. You always come in with reasonable conservatism, five hundred thousand dollars to the good, I'm a seventy five million dollar budget, so pretty sure I'm, so, pretty good. Well, we'll talk about it again in finance and, and to provide any, any regular meeting.
And I'll bring the, I'll bring summer back in the main year, that would want, I'll wait, unless it's a substantial change, we're not gonna do details in the main year. Obviously, it's been nice with public, because it was forty five minute presentation, but, um, you never really think about that.
Okay, there's nothing else, we'll move into the consent agenda, consent agenda, I had covering items five through eight, which I believe is the, uh, all the items to be voted on today.
I have a question.
Sorry, first need a motion to accept the consent. Is there? This woman, Miller, sorry, now, just making discussion.
No, we're fine. Um, the junior high was north of it. Does that put us at totally having replaced the roof on all of the junior high? Because I know we've had problems in the past and it seems to be like, I don't want to say consternation.
It is, we've been doing by section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this, I'd have to go back and pull, you know, what sections have been done in a couple of years. But we have a schedule with people across districts, all groups in terms of when the roofs are to be replaced. So any one total roof, we wouldn't have money to, that would, so, so I would have to get back.
Because you know, it's a.
I believe it is, um, yeah, the tear off would be the, the replacing the rubberized. So I don't know if that's the, I don't want to use the wrong term, but it's replacing that for membrane roof. So.
They normally, yeah, not well, kind of operations for a place to use it, but they normally do evaluation of the roof. They can tell if there's any damage underneath the rubber surface and then they respond, repair that. I'm not sure that's in this case. I mean, replace roofs before they're able to come in and go. All the installations are very good, just replace the rubber before we need to cut the section out. So I don't know.
Jake, we did an assessment on all of our roofs where they looked at those hotspots using different devices to detect where those leaks might be. Because if a leak is, is happening on the second floor in one area, that doesn't necessarily mean straight above it. But.
When I figured it between working and tough pointing, it must have been areas that was, you know, two.
You know, the tough pointing is something we've chipped away at, no pun intended. I mean, that's just what we've tried to do. So, you know, it's a building that in nineteen sixty-five, that's just the area. So there's been certain areas that we focused on within the last ten years that have been more, you know, concerning. And then this is just trying to, to catch up with, you know, the rest of the building. So, I mean, we, you know, we, we can certainly have James spend some time at operations to go over, you know, the routing process and schedule.
I'm going to assume from the cost, having patched flat roofs before, that this is a replacement for.
It's not a patch.
Yeah, I was going to say, but looking at the cost, that's why I was wondering because of how much it was. And I know, you know, listening is not cheap because I've been through that before, but only doing bits and pieces of a building because of how expensive it is and what we have in P I. And really, the question that rose from going to the presentation last week. And I noticed in the auditorium that we had some damage in the auditorium. So, you know, this is something that, is it true that any more damage?
Wasn't this something that needed to be done anyway when we were looking at the thirty million dollar thing? Or the O S C? So that was, so this is just keeping in line and hoping that we get back into that?
Right. Yeah, the schedule that we have is as much as preventative as it is reactionary. But as the conditions of the buildings, you know, continue to do the, the rain that we get. You know, that schedule that we have that matches the funds that we have available doesn't keep up with, you know, that replacement schedule. If we wanted to really, you know, that was what was nice about a bond issue and balance issue is that it would have provided the funds to do all and for us to catch up. Now, we're, we're continually, continuing to chase, you know, these things, even though we have a schedule, even though we're very thoughtful about how we're planning. We don't wait for a roof to just bring up to replace that section. We have a schedule, but fortunately, leaks bring up in those other areas and we're two years away from getting to that. That's the hard part. That's where you see some of the damage. And you heard Randy in his five-year forecast, we get to talk about sliding more money into capital. Trailers is a part of that, but certainly not all. It's a large part of the balance issue was addressing buildings that are, you know, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties. And we've done a remarkable job, but there's.
Yeah, I'll go back to the, the R C C made during inspections and specifically called out how great these buildings are being maintained for their age, for use. The amount of funds are available to be.
And that's why I have a part because you look at this project, it's over six hundred thousand. James' total P I is one point six million. So it's, you know.
Forty, forty-five percent of this, this one project.
One project, and that's, and that's, and that's the struggle.
This five thirty will be six hundred this year.
Yeah.
Cost increasing that much.
And this is a lot of hundred percent higher than what we were expecting.
So all the expenditure that we're being asked to approve is coming from the P I fund, not, none of it's coming from general fund?
For now.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say that for now.
Okay, I'm going to call to the question and ask for a roll call.
One item I just wanted to point out, this is the time of year where, you know, we celebrate, you know, students graduating and moving on to that next phase. And, and we do have a teacher here and at the next meetings, we'll be talking about some of these folks that are retiring. And Kelly Trees, who is a teacher at Perryford Junior High, is retiring. Just an outstanding teacher and someone that, you know, we've been very fortunate to have, you know, serving as an excellent role model for our students. Some of these are a role model for our fellow teachers and also for those that are building leaders. And certainly wish her all the best.
And an awesome guitar player.
Yes.
She's in the court.
Yes, yes. And Marjo's resignation is here as well, so we're grateful for, for his service and excited for him. It's the phase of certainly of, of his, of his life, so.
You're saying that with a smile, Tom.
He was, he was smiling yesterday when he got the thought, like, it's not his budget for next year.
So, and, and of course, Kell Johnson, you know, is on this. So appreciate allowing us to bring these here so we can continue to move forward at this busy time of year. We had a, talking with Dr. Rufford yesterday. We had a math resignation yesterday, this week, that was unexpected and good for that person. But it's, it's, it, yeah, it's the hamster wheel of job searches again. So we had a math position that we were looking for, so I think we'll look to see who is in that pool and we can pull in very quickly. Is that time of the year?
Thank you, yeah. What we can do in the work session. So thank you, thanks for pausing us. Yeah, the best, I liked the streets and Mr. Cooper and their next chapters. And Sue alluded to it earlier, you always do such a nice job keeping a pipeline of, of contacts within and outside the district.
People know it, it's Tom's, it's Tom's way to take over Lucas County and make sure their position or they work, work with him, so.
Somebody tagged, that's right.
The mob laws, the capitals are all in these positions now, so.
Who is it, Jack Welch?
It's your, it's your superpower.
Training three shades of red, just, uh, any other discussion on the consent agenda?
So looking at all ready hires too, so, you know, we just keep moving. Keep that hamster wheel in, out, and out, hopefully these will stay.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Laramore.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Ninkie.
Yes.
Dr. Rufford.
Yes.
Yes, consent agenda passes. That takes us out of nine. Any board discussion, any new business board member would like to raise?
Just make sure I sent you evaluations and email.
And thank you for it.
Oh, you sent them? I got the, I saw the email that you were just coming, oh, you sent that on this morning. Sorry, any questions?
The board president was a little delayed and looking him over one last time, so.
And then I put them into Google form because I don't see the paper. So if you have a question with the Google form, it's whether it's into the email, or it should be in the, using your page. But, you know, I've got the, it's not mail. And I'm happy to assist. Okay. Check box will be typing if you want to.
I have a, I have a question because Ray's not here, so I can't, you know, ask him how this works. But I've been asked by a couple of people, which is weird, about what is the process for our student? Is it all our student athletes that get randomly drug tested? And how are those students chosen? So I don't know if that's something that you know that you need to, okay.
Yeah, I can take a swing at that. So, so we, we call it, you know, our, our drug counseling program. So the way it's set up is that every student athlete is tested at the beginning of the season. So it's not random at all. So every student athlete is tested. And then at some point during the season, up to ten percent, I believe is the percentage, of the student athletes are then pulled for a random test. And the, when the students are all tested at the beginning of the year, or beginning of the season, excuse me. They are coded numerically by the drug testing company that does this. So they are an approved, I forget the terminology, it's been a while, but they are an approved drug testing company that does this for O D O, for the Department of Transportation, for prisons and all those kinds of things. So they generate the list of randoms based on the list of numbers that they have. They'll look at the names. We never see the names until they show up and say, pull these students. So we don't, we don't, you know, make out the list. So it is random based on what the company does. So all students are tested initially and then random. And we adjusted that number, you know, I think when we first started, it was twenty percent or ten percent. You know, so, but, but at any rate, that's what.
I can attest to the all students because Lucas even had to do that drug testing for bowling and track. And, you know, get accommodations for that. And everybody in experience, if you've ever been there when they do it, it's actually very coordinated with the company.
They do a nice job and the, the buildings do a nice job of, you know, getting kids where they need to be.
Organized chaos, but it's organized. It goes really, it goes very quickly, actually.
The goal of the program, because we want, we talk about drug testing, but it's really the drug testing and counseling component. Because we want this to be one deterrent for the student athletes. It gives them an out to say, you know, I would love to party with you, but I'm on the bowling team and I, I can't risk being tested. So it gives them an out and to save face because we know that peer pressure is something that's very positive, powerful. The other thing it does is we understand that kids make mistakes. And if a student has done something and they have an option to self-report. So if they do that, they can still be on the team, they can still participate. But by self-reporting, you have to go through our drug counseling program. Your parents are, or family is contacted. And, you know, it starts a conversation with them, with the student, with the drug counselor. And, and really, I think that's a very positive thing. So this program isn't set up to necessarily try to catch kids. They know it's coming, we're clear about it, it's to deter. And then if kids do make those decisions, we don't want to pull the rug out from under them. There was a time in education where it was zero tolerance and it sounds great. It was zero tolerance. If you're using drugs, alcohol, tobacco, you're off the team for, for good. And we realized, I think, that, you know, you're removing those students from probably the best thing that's going on in the lives, the best environment and culture. And so we want to approach this in a way where we keep students in that kind of nest with those positive things. Give them something to strive to, to do that's important. So, so I think once when people heard like all of those components in the rationale, I think people in this community weren't as nervous about it because they thought, you know, we're targeting kids and we're trying to catch kids. You get into the whole, and I'm not sure what the context of the question is, but are we avoiding certain kids to not test them because we know in their star athletes? And that's not the case. We don't touch the randoms and everyone's tested in the beginning of the season. And likewise, we're not targeting kids, you know. Dr. Rufford's son, Lucas, let's make sure he gets randomly pulled every time because we don't like her. That, that doesn't happen either, so as far as she knows.
Okay, I remember that conversation now. So that's, this has been around for a while. So basically, the essence of the comment about, oh, you're just picking these kids versus these kids. It's random choice by the company and all they have are numbers. They have the student names associated with that.
And we've had.
So then it can't be targeted.
No, we've had people that have, you know, said, you're, you're definitely targeting because my child has for three years in a row has been tarred, you know, has gotten a random. It's like, you know, you know, so it's just the way it works out.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other?
At the end of the month, and Sue, you kind of brought this up, but I didn't want to interrupt at that point. We will be meeting with Planning and Zoning to do, Tom referenced this in communication last week. And so I guess I'm, I'm looking to other board members, what are some of the things to present to Planning and Zoning? We've talked about understanding the different pots of money, understanding how new construction impacts us, not that much. So what, what are some of the things that you all would like see brought to Planning and Zoning as we educate, as we highlight? Again, I, you know, I think they, they're aware of the commercial residential split, such as it is. And I do think that horse left that barn probably fifteen years ago in our city. But again, what is brought to the townships, again, is, is I think different messaging perhaps than the city at this point. But we'll be with the pennies and the last two say.
And that's for the city, that's not the township.
But is the request for, kind of, what are the different things? They're talking about the city, the township.
Yeah. Yeah. And the big thing to understand is that there's, they push with senior housing or, you know, discover another one that might be brought forward or low income housing. Even if you put retirees in those houses, that frees up the other places that they came from within our community to families. And so you're, you're still generating kids, most likely, for kids or for families. And as Tom has brought up, and I, you know, I've seen it myself, you have parents, you have grandparents who are raising children. And it's not like it was when we were growing up. It's, it's part of reality today and, you know, there's even parts where you have courts assigning kids to other family members, not just grandparents too.
Somehow the city in particular, I'm not sure about the township, but the city in particular needs to look at specifically what Rosford does, what Mami has done to encourage commercial growth. Because I've talked to real estate, commercial developers, and they say, we don't want to be anywhere near Perry'sburg. So something they're doing is keeping these developers away. And I, it's, it wasn't my field when I was in real estate. And I know it's a very different kind of marketing approach that they do, but there's something wrong with what the city is doing that is literally driving people on a commercial basis away. And I'm, I'm not sure, I'm terribly clear on that as to what it is. But it's something that really should fall on the Planning and Zoning Committee to force council and the city administrators to pay attention to this. Because like you, like you said, this has been, well, when my old stead was mayor, I was going to say president. When my old stead was mayor, he warned about this. He was very concerned about this. And he said, this is going to happen overnight. It's going to seem like overnight, and that's what it does seem like. Overnight, we went from, yeah, we got a lot of homes here, gee, look what Rosford's doing, and boom. And now, like, like you say, really, the horse has left the barn and we can't recover from poor decisions now. So I, that would be my thing is that it behooves the Planning and Zoning Commission to recognize the damage that is being caused to our demographics here and what it's forcing. You know, everybody looks at the schools, but gosh, stop and think of what it's doing to our police and fire. These are the main things that taxpayers must fund. Everything else is cherry on top. And safety at our schools are the number one things. And I don't know why that is such a hard concept to understand. Yeah, like our library. Yeah, it's kind of nice that we don't have to pay garbage. But people willingly vote for that garbage tax every year. Ty Grayson was the one who brought this out to me decades ago, that we pay extra taxes for a garbage pickup. That should be coming out of the budget of the city that they already have. Instead, we're going to rebuild a town again. What? There's some screwy going on there that is hurting the main functions that our taxes must go for. And infrastructure, obviously, streets and all that kind of stuff. And Lori, your neighborhood looks awesome because I was driving around through it the other day, all your new streets, boy, that was really nice.
Very nice, very little.
Yes, yes. It was, it was like a roadhouse or like a test, a test drive for new cars, you know. How's, how's suspension work of this car? Just drive through Metta Park. So, yeah, it, and it starts with that committee. And that committee's got to understand that they do carry weight, that they do, they need to guide. But council will do, council will do.
I was like, damn.
Wasn't that perfect? I put the solder in, I planned that, they were right on it.
It's all there.
I must say, Jessica Ray has taken off, but just.
And after seeing you, uh, pretty important meeting, people. Anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. R.?
Okay.
Dr. Rufford, I want to make a suggestion. Sure, upon our parliamentary experts, and he said, I asked him to do a roll call for adjournments. Asked for any objections, there is none, we'll return by application.
Any objection? Hearing none, we are adjourned.